We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order for Monday, March 17th, 2025. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Here.
Councilmember Lynn.
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda?
None.
None.
I have one add.
Yep.
And it's under the consent agenda, seven tack one five, and it has to do with the lease agreement with the city member to use space for breakfast with the bunnies scheduled for April fifteenth.
All right, any other changes? All right, I'd seek a motion to approve the agenda with the modification of the addition to seven tack one five to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Nick. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll start first with our announcements. Under five one is the Park and Recreation Department's 2024 Annual Report. Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are excited to present the Parks and Recreation Department's 2024 Annual Report. This is the 22nd consecutive year the department has created an annual report. The annual report covers programs and events offered, parks, trails, and facilities projects completed, maintenance work performed in parks, on trails, and in facilities. At this time, I want to thank Missy, who compiled all the information and sorted through probably 100-plus pitchers to develop this annual report. I think she got it down to about 40 pitchers. So, thank you, Missy, for all your work on the annual report. Tonight, Jeremy, Missy, and Emily are here to help present the annual report. Feel free to ask questions during and after the presentation. At this time, I'll turn it over to Jeremy to kick it off.
Good evening, I'm Jeremy Peer, the Parks and Facility Supervisor. The first slide here, we have, we replaced the LED lights at the ice arena. One of the bids that we got was for $18,000, around $18,500. And also, with that, there was a rebate from XL for[207.31][207.34]$13,500, so it cost us a total of roughly $5,000 to replace the lights just above the ice sheet in the ice arena, so that was a really good deal for us. Kelly thought it was too good to be true. She made me call out the rinks around the communities that had used the same company to make sure that, you know, they didn't have any issues, and I sent several emails to that company, so. We definitely double-checked on that. It was a good deal. We bought instant on, instant off. Didn't have any issues with them all season, so that was really good for us. The next one we had was... We had a hydraulic hose break on the Zamboni on a Saturday afternoon. Damon's one of the mechanics for the city. I gave him a call. He came down, literally had it fixed within an hour. We didn't miss a resurface. We wanted to put this on here and give him a thank you. Saved the day, especially for me, weekend. So, that was great that he could help us out with that. Next one, the last winter that we had that was bad, we had a real bad ice buildup on the roof. It crashed and wrecked the gas line to the dehumidifiers on the right side for the rink there, broke the line. We... Kelly had the idea to reach out to Minnesota Energy to see if they could help us out with the cost of it. It was, turned out to be $7,500 to do the repair, and they gave us $5,000 for it. We were looking at options of how to divert the snow off the roof, and there wasn't really a good solution for it. One of the building maintenance worker actually had the idea to run the pipe along the building under the drip line, and so that, we won't have that issue again. Here's a picture of lacrosse practice in the spring. At the ice arena, we have turf in the rink. First week in April till mid-May, usually about six weeks. We host two craft shows. They've got lacrosse Monday through Thursdays. This year, we added, Farmington Youth Football is going to do their trainings on Sundays at the ice arena. In the past, they'd done it at the Dundas Dome, so that was an addition for the turf this year. Here we've got John Carpenter. He's one of our newer park maintenance workers. The DNR asked if we had anyone that could help out stocking the river with trout. He's an outdoorsman, so we thought he would enjoy the opportunity, and he did. Next slide here is one of the main reasons we wanted to relocate, or the main reason we wanted to relocate the playground at Rambling River Park. As you can see, it's flooded. This playground, we had P-Rock in there for fault protection. When we moved the park over now, obviously, it's got the port in place, which is the best base that you can have for the playgrounds. Switching gears, in the last spring, we started the demo of the tennis courts for the location of the new playground. The guys took the light poles down, the fence, demoed the asphalt, put the base down, packed it. They put in drain tile, so it would drain. There's a picture of the playground being installed. The guys put the base down. On the left-hand side, you can see where the sidewalk ends. The guys poured new, two new walkways to the playground. One of the projects we had, we remodeled the, updated the bathrooms at the Rambling River Park, put in new handrails, new sinks, painted them all, and then we replaced the pad on the, in front of the bathrooms. There was a lip going into the doors, and then for ADA regulations, where the doors opened up, we needed to expand the concrete pads so walkers and wheelchairs could get in the bathroom. While we were looking at, the guys had the suggestion of replacing the trail sidewalk from the parking lot to the bridge, and we were able to do all that work in-house. We've got a couple of guys that have had, that do concrete in the past, and to have the guys to have the skills to be able to do that, to not have to be a contractor, it turned out great, and it looks really good. We now have Wi-Fi and security lights in all the parks. Like to thank Peter for that. He put in a lot of work organizing that and working with the guys to get that done. Building maintenance staff, they spend a lot of their time cleaning the buildings, cleaning carpets, sealing the tile of floors, and doing painting. Here's a picture of Robert. One of the issues we've got down here at City Hall is the carpet squares like to pop up, and we've got corners sticking up, and a picture of him scraping the glue off and gluing the tiles back down. Here the Parks and Facility workers work together over at the Rambling River Center, packing up the equipment and the furniture. We ended up having three pods that they packed it in, and then they did a bunch of demo of walls and stuff that was within their ability.
All right. I'm Emily Shear. I'm one of the recreation supervisors. And so, this is a, our picture of a class that is our adult pickleball lessons. They are offered in May, so they were offered last May, and they'll be again offered this May. And Rachel Krug, who is in that Aqua hat and t-shirt, she is the instructor for the course. She's been teaching and playing for 15 years, and she's highly decorated. She's got like 110 medals and, I don't know, national championships and all that, so it's really good to have her lead these lessons for us. So, this is a picture of one of our T-ball and/or soccer practices, and specifically what happens at this particular practice. It's the second-to-last night of the T-ball/soccer lesson period. It's a six-week period. So, it's the second-to-last night. It's called Saints Night that we like to call it after. And so, during that time, the kids play more fun, interactive games, so things like a game against their parents, or a game where they have to, like, hop like a frog in between the bases instead of running, or things like that. And then the other one is when they hit a ball, or hit a ball off the tee, if they hit a bucket, then they get to pie a coach in the face at the end of the practice. And so, this is one of the times this past year where they got to pie their seasonal staff coaches in the face, and it's a ton of fun for not only the kids, but also for our seasonal staff. They actually really like it. They take selfies after, and it's, they have a blast doing it as well. But this year, we actually implemented it at soccer, so it was kind of a new thing for that age group. So, Farmington Parks and Recreation, we have partnered with over 100 businesses, civic organizations, government agencies, and families during 2024. We have had sponsorships for movies in the park and music in the park, as well as the Do Run. We've had volunteers help out at Secret Holiday Shop or Breakfast with the Bunnies. We've had families and businesses and organizations help clean our parks. The list can go on and on. And it's really great to have a supportive community that is willing to help us and partner with us. This particular picture is of the Dakota County Library. So, we have three partnerships with them. The first is geocaching, which is essentially kind of like a scavenger hunt, where they go to the 27 parks, and they find the little boxes that they need to find, and then it comes to a prize at the end. But the other ones are the story trails with the library, where they walk the trails and read a story on those trails. And then this one in particular, the woman in the blue, that is Amy, and she is the child's librarian. And then we have Josie, our seasonal staff member, and they are both interacting with a girl for our Storytime in the Park. Storytime in the Park is where Amy reads a story or a couple, collection of stories for the first half an hour, and then the last half an hour, our seasonal staff does a craft and plays a game with them. And this theme was adventure, and so that's why she has a pair of binoculars. For more partnerships, as well as some new programs that we are offering, this past year, we offered the Little Due Days Ambassadors program with the Farmington Ambassador Program. And then we also offered Helmet Heroes with the Farmington Police Department, as well as a couple of city council members. And from there, we can, from this program, essentially, we offered free helmets to children who signed up, as well as helped them get fitted for those helmets, and then offered a bike safety program, and that was through Children's Minnesota. And then we also offered a bike maintenance kind of tip course, and that was through, that was done by Downtown Bicycles in Northfield. And then the whole thing came together at the end to have a bike ride. Kelly wanted originally to go for a 10-mile bike ride, and we slowly talked her down from that. And so, in the end, it just was, you know, around the parking lot, but it all turned out fine. It was rainy, too, so, you know. Well, we'll hopefully have a better weather-related instance next, or this upcoming year. And then we received the No Child Left Inside Grant from the State of Minnesota and Department of Natural Resources. So, this year, we were able to buy archery equipment with that grant, and so this was the first time we were able to offer an archery class. This was in the fall, and so we hope to continue with that throughout the remainder of the future. And then we also were able to buy snowshoe equipment as well. And then with this, we also collaborated with Due Days and its volunteers to provide the weekend with the community with the festival. This is obviously a picture of Nick with his son, who ran the one mile. And so, our staff helped hang up the banners around downtown, helped hang up the lights in that four-way intersection over here on Third Street and Oak. And also, we put the puppet wagon out and entertained kids in the morning of, Saturday morning, and then also helped run the Do Run.
So, this was, City Administrator Ray Gorski had the idea of celebrating winter holidays in downtown by having a holiday-lighted parade. City staff, Farmington Rotary, and then we recruited Homestead Church, we met first in August of 2024 to start the discussion and planning for a lighted parade. And on Saturday, December 6th, 26 lighted floats rolled downtown Farmington to 3,000 to 4,000 people, way more than we would have expected or anticipated. This is a picture of the choir singing after the parade in the Homestead Church lot. We had rented a couple of fire tables from Crown Rental. Lynn and I were here at City Hall, and we walked down to Homestead after the parade, and we turned that corner, and both of us just went, wow. We did not know Homestead Church was going to bring out all their Christmas decorations and all their trees, and it was, it was so awesome and so magical. After the event, I think it was Chief Rutherford that says, "You've now created an annual event." So, we have created an annual event. We will be starting the planning here in the next few months for the 2025 lighted parade. So, want to give a shout-out to the Farmington Rotary and also Homestead Church for all they did for this parade.
Hi, I'm Missy Colbeck. I'm the other recreation supervisor here with the City of Farmington Park and Rec Department, and I work mostly at the Rambling River Center. And you see a few of you there. Mayor Hoyt, Councilmember Wilson, and Chief Rutherford, along with some of our puzzle ladies. So, we're always trying to make money. We're always fundraising, constant fundraisers. If you need anything shredded, it's $10 for a banker box or two brown bags. If you buy anything at Happy Harry's, please mention us, and they give us 10% back. We've made lots and lots of money. So, we're always fundraising. So, Councilmember Wilson bought us the million-dollar puzzle.
The biggest dud ever.
So, we try. If you get the puzzle together, it's a QR code, and then you, if you get it together by a certain date, you scan the QR code and send it in, and you have the chance of winning up to a million dollars. Well, we tried, and we had help from some of the best brains in the city, as you can see, and we could not get that puzzle together. So, I don't know. Councilmember Wilson, did you get yours together at home?
I may have thrown it away.
I may have thrown this one away as well.
Yeah.
We had a lot of help, as Jeremy mentioned earlier, maybe Kelly, packing everything up. It's amazing what you collect. It's amazing how much we got rid of that needed to be getting rid of, but it was amazing how much we still had. We ended up with three of these containers that have furniture and equipment, and we just had the best staff taking care of it and doing it all. It's very, very nice to not worry about it and just know you're in great hands. So, want to thank those guys. We moved over there on November 1st. This picture doesn't show it very busy, and I should have maybe taken one where it's very busy, because I think Chief Price might be a little bit upset. We were triple-parked in his parking lot a couple times, and we were told triple-parking isn't probably the best, safest option. So, we are over there. We are doing exercise class and coffee and bingo and all of our normal activities. We are very much looking forward to being back in our own facility, but it's been wonderful for them to have us there.
All the previous slides and pictures have shown smiles, win, wins, teamwork, et cetera. However, there have been several challenges last year, and some that have run into this year. Vandalism, graffiti, trail damage, and emerald ash bore. That light pole is just one example. Kids shook it until it basically came down. That light pole is about $9,000 to replace. So, it's unfortunate when we have incidents like this that have to take city resources, whether it be dollars or staff time to fix. There were several goals accomplished under the city's pillars in 2024. Probably the two most significant under the community engagement was the accessible playground with the port-in-place rubber surfacing. That was the momentum we needed at Rambling River Park to start that ball rolling, and we're going to continue that into 2025. The second one was the approval of the contract with CM Construction Company to complete the renovations at the Rambling River Center. That space is, it looks so different right now, and when we reopen in April, it's going to be quite the finished product. We're really excited about this. If you can read the picture here on the screen, it says, "Skateboarding is not a crime. Build them a park." So, I don't know. Gary, do you want to tell the story? Do you want me to tell the story? So, I'm going to tell it from Gary's point of view, as he told it to me. So, he came, he came into a meeting, I think it was a Monday morning this past summer or spring, and there was a young gentleman, early twenties, out there skateboarding on our bench and our flower pots out there, and Gary kindly asked him to move off of our equipment and move along and don't skateboard on the city's property. And he had some colorful words for Gary. So, Gary just continued on his business and came to the meeting. Well, when I went home for lunch that day, I came out, and I'm like, oh. He wrote a message to Gary. Skateboarding is not a crime. Build them a park. So, if you remember at the last meeting, you did approve an application to be submitted for the DNR to build a skate park. So, we hope to, we are successful in securing that funding this year. So, hopefully, we'll be able to build him a park. Under infrastructure support goals, probably the biggest win in 2024 was amending the city code regarding public parks, trails, and open space dedication. Have actually seen a developer, actually, Lennar, who has actually figured out the calculation correctly. If you remember, with our old park dedication, it was very confusing, not easy for developers to figure out what the amount of land dedicated was needed or required. Now, we have a dedication that is very easy for the developers to figure out what they owe, and it's been correct. So, that was very helpful. The other thing, obviously, last year, it was not a lot of snow, so Park Maintenance was able to remove 236 infested ash trees and hazard trees. Here's a picture of the new bridge at the North Creek Greenway, just north of the Jimbell Park and Preserve. That trail is now fully open, but this is when it was getting put into place. This is a picture of Austin here, having fun at work one day. I think it was when we were packing up the senior center. I want to take this opportunity to thank Austin for everything he has done for the department, city, and community. He has been an excellent worker and an even better teammate. Austin's last day, unfortunately, with the city is Friday. We will miss him, but we wish him well in his new adventure. So, we continue to, you know, engage employees, make sure they have the tools necessary to complete the job, and they're having fun while working. I think this picture shows that they were having fun that day. Looking forward, if you remember, Angie Craig visited the Veterans Memorial in August. This was when she was, when we were putting in a grant for the Veterans Pavilion. We have not heard about funding for that. Probably my favorite story about this was, we invited the park maintenance workers to this visit, and she went and introduced herself to every single one of the park maintenance workers, and she said to them, "Nice to meet you guys. The park maintenance workers are always my favorite employees." So, we really appreciated her coming to visit. She did tell Grant Beal, who she, he's showing her the plans right now, that she was going to come to the Memorial Day Celebration in May this year, and I think they're still planning on her being the keynote speaker. Under the city's pillars, this is a picture of the Rotary Holiday Luncheon. Continue to attend Farmington Business Networking Monthly Meetings and visit with the downtown businesses, reintroduce the Rambling River Center to them, and have them stop in and visit the new and improved center. Community engagement. We want to continue the ball rolling at Rambling River Park. We have a number of grant applications going to be out there, so we want to keep that going. And then, complete the Rambling River Center improvements, hold a grand reopening. The other big one for this year is Deepaway Arts Park and engage in the community on potential improvements out there. This is a picture of Tanaka. They are a nonprofit. They had reached out to the mayor originally, and then Missy and I met with them, and they hosted a murder mystery on the Rambling River Express in August. It was a free event. We probably had 70 people there, from teenagers to 80-somethings, and they all engaged together, and it was a really fun night. So, under infrastructure support, we want to continue use of the asset management tool for a replacement in new investments. Replace the equipment at Westview Agers Park for five- to 12-year-olds and the swings. Continue completion of the deferred maintenance projects identified in the facility condition assessments. Replace the trails in Rambling River Park in conjunction with the construction of the new North Creek Greenway. And then utilize PCI ratings to help prioritize trail improvement projects and complete the reconstruction. Employee engagement, culture, and wellness. Just ensure funding is provided, so all staff members are provided opportunities to attend conferences, workshops, trainings. Continue regular meetings with staff. Encourage staff to attend wellness events and activities, and ensure staff has the tools and resources to complete their job duties efficiently and effectively. So, Jay Weber, he's from Weber Recreational. We bought our playground equipment from him for Rambling River Park. Him and I were fortunate enough to be able to go to Riverview to present to the multi-ages classes. Those are two to, second through fifth graders. And after the event, they sent us a bunch of thank you notes. So, I wanted to highlight this one that Oliver sent us. I think it really hit home the importance of that park and them being able to play on it, all children be able to play on it, but also his hope for us building a new skate park. During the presentation, it was kind of a question-and-answer, and there were just students raising their hands and asking us just random questions. And there was a young gentleman in the back. He was probably a fifth grader, is my guess. He raised his hand, and he said to me, "So, is this project going to be over budget?" And I'm like, wow, fifth grader, holy smokes. And I was like, I don't even know how to answer that. And I said, you know, the playground equipment, the port-in-place rubber surfacing, no, that won't be over budget. We've signed a contract. We know exactly what the cost was. But the surprise we didn't anticipate was how many layers of asphalt was placed on top of each other, on top of each other, on top of each other for the tennis court. So, the amount of asphalt we had to haul out of there is way more than we would have ever anticipated and fill to bring it up to line, to the proper height for installation of player equipment. But it was a really fun experience, and supposedly, we're getting invited back for the showcase coming up here in April or May, so happy to do those kind of events with the students. So, City Council, Park and Rec Commission, and the Rambling River Center Advisory Board. First of the City Council, we couldn't do what we do without you. Your support, your time, your dedication, you show up at events, the things you do, we just, we're very, very thankful. Without your support and the funding of the ARPA dollars, this playground wouldn't happen. Rachel would not have been cutting that ribbon on the new playground equipment at Rambling River Park. So, thank you for all you do. I know it's not always easy, but we do appreciate it, and we're better because of it. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, thank you to them as well. These are five outstanding individuals who look out for the better of the community. Not one of them had a single interest, but did what was best for the City of Farmington and the community. They did celebrate a few wins this past summer. We cut the ribbon at Flagstaff Meadows Park. That's just south of Farmington High School, so some of the neighbors helped us cut that ribbon. And then at Sunny Hills Park, this is Ann Jensen. Ann won the naming contest a few years ago to name Sunny Hills Park, Sunny Hills Park. Her story is, she invited her granddaughters over. They live in the Disted Park neighborhood, and they were standing on top of the hill by where the gazebo is now, and it was a sunny day, and they were looking at Southern Hills Golf Course. So, hence Sunny Hills Park. So, she's cutting the ribbon on the park there. And to the advisory board, they've had a busy year as well. They've been busy raising money and educating the community and doing so many things that we need their help with. I don't think we've ever shown City Council this video, so we thought tonight would be a perfect time. I think they're excited for, they're ready to be back in their in their home, so.
As I said before, we're always fundraising, fundraising, fundraising. Last year, they fundraised over $15,000, which is very exciting. It'll be used for things not in the general fund, most likely probably furniture and fixtures, that kind of thing, at the new building. This is a picture of them getting ready for some volunteers and Jeff from our Advisory Board getting ready for our silent auction. Thank you to everybody who donates and who comes and bids on baskets. Jeff had never been part of that before, and he commented that it was a lot more work than
With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about 2024 or 2025.
Thank you. Steve?
Oh, boy, you had to start down here. Kelly, and, you know, the entire team, wow, that's, I mean, just a great presentation. Thank you so much. And, you know, and I'm I'm sure your team is aware of this, but you're you're creating lifetimes and memories for children and adults in the community. And, you know, just an immense amount of gratitude to the Rambling River Center Board, the the Park and Rec Commission, because they they come up with a lot of the ideas, too. They work collaboratively with all of you. But, you know, and I think Jeremy, you highlighted this quite a bit, too. I mean, our park maintenance workers do the hard work of, you know, getting out there and making the parks look good. The council made a priority of, you know, increasing funding in that area so we'd have attractive parks for our residents to go to. So just thank you to all of you. It was a phenomenal presentation, Kelly, so thank you.
Jake?
No questions from me, but again, thank you, Kelly, Missy, Emily, and Jeremy for your presentation tonight. I really think there was a lot, and I can't remember who mentioned it, but there were a lot of smiling faces, and I think that really goes to show the heart that's behind everything you guys do on a daily basis. So thank you for all your hard work. I know Steve mentioned the Rambling River Advisory Board. I know my grandma sits on that board, and and she appreciates all the work that you do and and all the work that they do as a board. So thank you to the Rambling River Board, thank you to the Parks Board, and and everybody on your team for everything that they do.
Holly?
Yeah, I I guess the only thing that I would really add to this is just the special skill sets that a lot of the team members have that really help to support what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Having somebody on staff that knows about pouring concrete, having somebody on staff that knows about replacing, you know, hoses in in certain situations like that, that all comes together, and it's a huge testament to the the variety of skills that the team itself really has in looking inward rather than just always subcontracting out, which is super helpful in trying to, you know, allocate dollars toward things that make them stretch a little bit further. You obviously have built a fantastic team around each section of that department, and, you know, as as we've said, you're you're hitting these spots in people's lives where it's it's not, Parks and Rec is not just little kids, Parks and Rec is not just the Rambling River Center, but it's really this whole experience that all of the generations that live in Farmington get to have, and that's, you know, built off of all of the hard work that's been done by you and your teams. It's it's heartwarming to see it. You know, not all this stuff is is fun and fancy, right? Cleaning graffiti is not fun and fancy, cutting down dead trees is not fun and fancy, but there are great things that are coming out of the work that's being done, so it's it's neat to see.
Nick?
That was a lot. I don't think I can top that. I just wanted to apologize, I guess, to Missy. I know I used to be much better at making the coffee in café on Fridays before I had switched jobs, and it eats me up a little bit inside every time a Friday goes by, and I wasn't able to come check on Blanche and make sure everyone was okay there. Steal lemon bars.
We haven't been doing it in our new building because we have exercise class followed by bingo, and it's really tight in there. So you haven't missed it for 2025.
Okay, well, I need to know if Blanche is still okay and that, you know, I want to still get in there.
Do it again this next spring, late fall.
Great work all around, though.
I think the easiest way to say it is Park and Rec finds a way to touch a high percentage of our residents, right? It's not just the programming, it's not the music in the park, it's not just through the large events and festivals, it's through the collaboration with other local units of government, the, you know, Dakota County and the library, the Youth Hockey Association, the Figure Skating Association, the open door and delivering food, right? Like, you could go down that list of dozens of entities that you guys partner with to offer services to our residents that extend far beyond just the classes. I mean, the Currents comes out quarterly, right? About 60% of this is embedded in Parks and Rec, right? And and one thing that you often hear from our residents is there's nothing for our kids to do, right? There's a lot of stuff to do in our community. There are a lot of events that we know we would love to see much higher participation in, and for one reason or another, they don't have traction. Sometimes it's scheduling conflicts, it's, you know, targeted age groups, and kiddos a little bit older, but none of that takes away from the passion of your entire department to go out and to deliver in our community every week of every month in as many ways possible. And we can't be more grateful for what you guys continue to do, you and your entire team. From maintenance and upkeep to repairs as needed, and then even into your programming, it just you you hit so many areas. Having the Rambling River Center, having this renovation and the the grant that we received, not only reduced local source funding, right, but it also it it helped affirm the importance of a landing place for many members of our community, not just the membership that's 55 and over, but all of the events that take place there, the the Boy Scout classes, the Girl Scout symposiums, the the firearm safety classes that get handled over there. That building is so used, and it was identified decade and a half ago from prior city councils as it being a priority. And through partnerships, again, collaboration, we are able to direct sufficient funding to make sure that this building receives the long overdue upgrade that it needed. And we we look forward, I'll speak on behalf of my peers, we especially look forward to the things that you're going to be able to do in that building in the years to come. I mean, we were talking, you know, they started in November, and all of a sudden it was like, yeah, hopefully by April or May, like, it's right around the corner. And it's just, I couldn't be more ecstatic to to see what's happening and and what your team continues to do. So thank you for everything that you guys do very much. The next item on our agenda is 5.2, which is our Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4 Annual Review. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, hello and good evening, Mayor Hoyt and council members. My name is McKenna Rodine, and I am the Water Resources Specialist. Tonight, I'll be presenting 2024 Farmington MS4 Year in Review. So I want to give a brief overview of the MS4 permit. To start, for those who are unfamiliar, the acronym MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It is a system owned or operated by a public entity, designed or used for collecting or transporting storm water. And the MS4 permit really got its start when it was added to the Clean Water Act in 1987. Implementation of the MS4 program began in the 1990s, but it wasn't until the early 2000s that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, or MPCA, started issuing these permits to Minnesota cities. These permits are issued every five years, and the next issuance is later this year in November. And the purpose of this permit was or is to reduce the amount of sediment and other pollutants entering state waters from stormwater systems. And there's a few different ways that the MPCA enforces this permit. One is by annual reporting. So we are required to submit an annual report just to give a rundown of how we're meeting the permit requirements and what we're doing. And then a little bit more intensive, we have audits. I know the MPCA's goal is to audit every city at least once every seven years. As you can see, we were last audited in 2015, so we are overdue. They are a little bit backlogged. I know after COVID and the pandemic, they they've been behind on that. So we're definitely due for one, it's just hard to say when for sure we we will be. As far as the permit requirements, we're required to keep updated maps of our stormwater infrastructure, so the stormwater pipes, stormwater ponds, things like that. The main components of this permit are referred to as Minimum Control Measures, or MCMs. MCM1 has to do with public education and outreach. MCM2, public participation and involvement. MCM3, illicit discharge detection and elimination. MCM4, construction site stormwater runoff control. MCM5, post-construction stormwater management. And MCM6 pertains to pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. I will touch on these each as we go. Yeah, so how exactly is Farmington meeting these requirements? So as of last year, a SWIP manual was completed for the city. SWIP stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. This basically serves as a reference document for how the city is meeting each requirement of the the permit that I just went through, and also contains our standard operating procedures as well. So it serves for city staff to refer to, as well as it's a public document, so residents in the community can also take a peek at that as well. As I mentioned earlier, for the mapping, we have updated our maps as of last year or late last year, and you can see on there the stormwater ponds and and the pipes, catch basins, some catch basins and outfalls are all present on there. And then we also have illicit discharge priority areas. So these are areas throughout the city that are identified as having a higher likelihood of illicit discharges occurring. Education, outreach, and public involvement activities. So this is MCM1 and 2. The permit does require three topics, pet waste, deicing salt, and illicit discharges to be educated on, as well as the cities or city of Farmington, all cities get to choose two additional topics that we also educate on. So those other two topics are yard waste and residential BMPs. And so how are we educating outreach and providing public involvement activities? We got the Currents newspaper that goes out quarterly, so we put lots of information about what we have going on, or a lot of information about about each of these topics in there, and we try to pertain them to, you know, the winter currents, we'll put the deicing salt and, you know, coordinate it that way. Similarly, social media will make posts throughout the year on each of these topics as well. Also try to get out to events. So I did go to the Fire Open House last fall, as well as I had a table at the Dakota County Fair. That's that picture up in the left-hand corner there. I have a table out there, or had a table out there. And then we have a number of volunteer opportunities. So we have an adopt a pond program, and this is where residents can adopt a pond for a two-year term and go out and clean at least twice a year, keep it clean, keep help keep it maintained. We also have the Pond and Park Cleanup Day, just a smaller timeframe. Residents and community can sign up to help pick up garbage and and debris from ponds and parks. We also have adopted drain program and storm drain stenciling, where residents can help clear debris and sediment and other things on or around storm storm drains. And then we also have a program, it's actually the administration of the training and gathering the volunteers of State Dakota County, but it's the Wetland Health Evaluation Program, or WEP. And this is where residents can go and monitor wetlands throughout the city. So we do pick the wetlands and then also provide the funding as well for that. And then lastly, we have, we are required per the permit to provide public comment on our SWIP. Again, this just allows for transparency and allows for residents to let us know if they have any suggestions or changes or things that, you know, they think could be improved. MCM3 pertains to illicit discharge reporting and response. We do have an illicit discharge fact sheet. When I go to events, I'll carry these on me and hand these out. This gives kind of a rundown of what types of illicit discharges to look out for and to report them. Essentially, an illicit discharge is anything but or everything, I'm saying that backwards, anything that is not rainwater that goes down the drain. So that also includes leaves and lawn clippings as well, those are pretty common in the summertime. And then if we do get reports on illicit discharges, or if city staff or myself are out and about and seeing illicit discharge, we are required to document it, which basically just entails documenting what occurred and what was the action taken to correct it.
That's an MPCA requirement to report.
Correct.
So it's not that the city's driving around looking for people and trying to be a pain in the butt.
Correct.
There's a requirement by the MPCA that when you see an illicit discharge that it has to be reported.
Correct. Yep. Yep, and and again, the purpose is to just reduce the amount of pollution, eventually draining to, you know, the Vermillion River or things like that. And we also have a spill response plan so that if these illicit discharges do occur, and myself, or if it's a non-emergency situation, people can walk through the procedure to know what to do. MCM4 and 5 pertain to development plan reviews, inspections, and enforcement. So the city, when we get development plans, and we are required to verify that each construction site or each development has their own individual stormwater pollution prevention plan, and also has to include erosion and sediment controls, so things like biologs and silt fences and soil stabilization need to be called out. And then any development that is installing an acre or more of impervious surfaces also needs to construct a stormwater treatment system, and those are the stormwater ponds. So ultimately, anything, the goal there is that anything from their development would ultimately drain to that stormwater pond before draining offset. And then additionally, we are required to inspect these developments to make sure that they are installing the erosion and sediment controls on their site and following their SWIP. So 89 inspections were completed in 2024. And additionally, we are required to enforce any noncompliance that we do see. So we want to make sure that we're that developers are maintaining those controls to mitigate the pollution or sediment runoff from their sites. So we kind of have three different tiers of enforcement. The first one is an informal notice, usually typically an email or verbal, you know, phone call, or if I meet them on the site, just highlights, hey, went to your site, inspected it, saw this, please get it corrected. And most often, developers do that. Thirty-one of those informal notices were issued in 2024. However, there's always a few instances where they don't get corrected, and so we do bump that up to a Notice of Violation, which is a more formal document that is issued via email, that more formally lists out the violations and the corrective actions and a timeline to complete. And so those, there were six issued in 2024. And then in worst-case scenarios, it hasn't happened yet, but we are able to draw on their escrow funds to either hire somebody to go out and fix the issue, or buy the equipment ourselves and go install it for them. Part of MCM6 is staff training. So all field staff, that includes fire and police, we are required to provide an annual environmental compliance training that basically just kind of goes over the permit requirements so that everyone's kind of aware of of what we as the city are required to to do. And then there's a number of certifications, some that are required, some that are just helpful in helping with compliance with the permit. A few are listed here. Smart salting is for city staff who are performing winter maintenance activities. It helps mitigate chloride pollution and and lower the amount of salt that we're putting out on the roads and sidewalks. Erosion and stormwater management, this is for city staff like myself who do the inspections at developments to make sure that we are certified in what to look for. And same with illicit discharge detection, they just want to make sure we're we're trained on what to what to look for and how to respond to it. And then any additional conferences, work groups, webinars that we take throughout the year, we have to document as well, and those help to keep our knowledge up to date. MCM6 also has to do a lot with the stormwater infrastructure, so I just wanted to highlight some of the infrastructure. So I just wanted to highlight some of the infrastructure that I'll be talking about. So of course we've got the stormwater ponds. Those are everywhere. We've got lots of them. Outfalls, these are where ultimately our stormwater either goes outside of the limits of the city or eventually outfalls into a major natural, or not even major, just a natural body of water, so lake, river, stream. And then some catch basins, those are designed to allow the sediment and debris to settle out of the water before ultimately draining to the stormwater pond. And as you could guess, we are required to inspect these structures. We have to inspect all stormwater ponds and outfalls at least once per permit term. So again, that's every five years. And then we are required to inspect all some catch basins yearly. So for ponds, we have about 200 ponds in Farmington. Sixty-six ponds were inspected in 2024, seventy-two in 2023 and two in 2022. So we're about 70% complete there. There's about fifty-six outfalls in Farmington, thirty outfalls inspected in 2024, eight inspected in 2023. It's kind of same thing. We're about 70% done with those. And roughly 200 some catch basins, all were inspected in 2024. So for the 2024 calendar year, they are 100% complete. And based on these inspection findings, we must maintain this infrastructure. So typically with ponds and outfalls that entails clearing vegetation, clearing sediment, any tree shrub removal or adding riprap to those outlets, anything that just really helps the integrity of the system and ensures maximum functionality. And same thing with some catch basins that usually requires vacuuming out the sediment that settles at the bottom so they don't overflow and then repairing any cracks to the structure itself. So challenges, I think just one challenge that comes to mind with all of this is educating developers, community and staff. I think developers, you know, some developers, I think mostly all developers kind of get it by now that they need to have these necessary controls in place. But, you know, sometimes just the lack of communication or just getting it across that it's important to have these doesn't, isn't always super clear. The community, I mean, like I mentioned before, we try as much as we can to get it to the Currents, social media, you know, public events, things like that. But, you know, not everybody reads the Currents, not everybody's on social media and not everybody goes to the event. So always just constantly trying to find new and innovative ways to reach more people and educate. And then staff as well. I mean, you know, field staff, especially police and fire, we're always busy, we're always out. So it can be difficult at times to find a time where everyone can come together and attend a training. But and then on top of that too, I think just it's one thing to educate, it's another thing for people to actually implement it. So, you know, it's, we try, we try to put the knowledge out there, but it's really up to the individual to act on it. So that's kind of what I had for the MS four permit. I wanted to just briefly touch on 2025 projects and activities pertaining to stormwater. So we have the Fourth and Willow project, which is a structure that will be installed by the Vermillion River, which basically will significantly reduce the amount of pollutants going into the Vermillion River. So pretty good, pretty good project there to help with that. We have the industrial park ditch cleanout. Historically, there's been issues with flooding in the industrial park area. And we're hoping with the ditch cleanout, that'll help mitigate that issue or completely get rid of that issue and hopefully clear out some of the congestion that we think is happening there. And then we have two pond maintenance projects. One is the Fair Hills Greenway area, other one is Devonshire Avenue and 206th Street. These ponds require just a little bit more maintenance than what I had mentioned before. So things like dredging and stripping vegetation, replanting, just basically because these are just older ponds and see a lot of activity, so just require a little bit more maintenance. One thing that I kind of took on for this year, my goal for this year is I want to test the chloride levels in North Creek, Middle Creek and the Vermillion River. Salt Watch is an organization that gives out free chloride testing kits. So I ordered a bunch of those and I'm going to test quarterly for, on each of these rivers just to kind of gauge what our chloride levels are in each of our three main waterways. I will be completing the pond and outfall inspections per the permit timeline, continuing education and outreach activities. And then as I did mention earlier on, the reissuance of the new MS four permit will be later this year and we do have to reapply. So once that comes out, I'll be working on that as well. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time. I can take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, ma'am. Jake?
No questions for me, but I was almost completely unfamiliar with this process before tonight. So thank you for your thorough presentation and walking through all the different criteria in this permit process.
Holly?
For me, actually, the only thing that came up was outside of what you would like explained in great detail was the park and pond cleanup and the adopt a pond opportunity for residents. You know, aside from the basic things that we all do, clean up after your dog, you know, don't blow your lawn clippings into the middle of the road, that sort of stuff. They're great opportunities when it comes to beautification of your individual neighborhoods, park and pond cleanup being one of them. And that's coming up on May third. And so just a great opportunity, you know, for residents to engage in and do some of the little things that help with the bigger thing.
So. Yeah.
Great presentation, a lot, a lot of information. That's really all that I have.
Yeah, that amount of detail was consistent with a typical public works presentation. Appreciate that. I guess, I thought maybe you were kind of underselling the Fourth and Willow project. I don't know if it was just me being surprised at the scale, but to see that there are 40,000 pounds of sediment going into the river every single year that we can trap seems pretty significant to me. So I appreciate that kind of attention that is getting paid to it out here. So, but that's about it.
No, thank you for pointing that out. It is a significant.
Steve?
Yeah, McKenna, I just want to thank you for the really, really thorough report. You did a really nice job with this. I have a strong suspicion that City of Farmington would be doing 100% of the activities that you outlined here, but the reality is it is an MPCA mandate onto the City of Farmington. So I think that's important for the community to know as well. And the work that you're doing, the proactive work with the chloride, you know, our collaboration with developers and how they're supposed to treat our, you know, our waters in our community and everything else is super important. So you're obviously, you and John are the two key people with that. So I just wanted to express my appreciation and nice report.
Thank you.
Yeah, very well put together. Even for, you know, the average person who doesn't have much familiarity with it, right? It's, it's easy to understand and easy to digest. As someone who works directly with water every day, if you're standing at the rooftops and you could broadcast one message to our residents, right? How they can help do their part, what would you say to them?
Oh, that's a good question. You're putting me on the spot. I would say, I mean, I guess any little effort goes a long way. I think it's kind of the cliche, but you know, if you, maybe one out of all the people in community, maybe you think it doesn't make a difference, but when you put all of them together, it's going to make a big difference. So even if it's as simple as just picking up your pets, you know, poop, you know, in the yard or things like that. I mean, that, that, you know, bacterial runoff contributes a lot to the algae blooms even in the ponds that we see. So a little goes a long way, I guess, would be my message.
I appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is our citizen comments. If there's anyone in attendance that wishing to speak, come up at this time. Remember that citizen comments is a time for anyone to address the city council on matters not on the agenda. Those speaking should state their name and address and limit their comments to five minutes. The council will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those issues requiring your response will be responded to by the next city council meeting. Go ahead.
I'm Nancy Arsted, 22165 Beaumont Avenue. I do not want to be here tonight. Your city staff won't respond to my questions and emails, so I'm forced to come here. I don't enjoy this. Josh, you said that issues, you've said that issues requiring a response will be responded to by the next city council meeting. This applies to my issues. I want them responded to by your next city council meeting or before. Steve Wilson, some of my words tonight do not include you. You'll know which ones don't. If you can help me though out though, I would appreciate it. First, on February 18th, we submitted to you two formal ethics complaints involving actions at the city, your director of development, Deanna Koonen, and your building inspector, Brock Haskamp. That was a full month ago. I've asked for an estimated timeframe for the city's investigation. I've received no answer. Will it take 60 days, four months, two years? You should be able to provide a timeframe and a timeline. Tract sure had all of you hopping when they had a timeline for you to keep. If there's one thing you guys can do, I know it's to keep a timeline. Tract was even telling Tony when to schedule our very first public hearing in May. So I know you can make things happen quickly. We asked for an independent investigator, but we're told no. So the city is going to investigate this city and your timeline is infinity. That does not work. You are not being transparent. I would like a simple timeframe. You are already one month in. Next, I submitted my first data request on October 16th, five months ago. After back and forth over an $8,000 invoice and getting the state data practices office involved, I finally received a partial batch of data on February 5th. I've asked when I can expect the remainder and I just get the ever convenient, it's with the city attorney. I want a reasonable timeframe from you. Delaying this data benefits the city. Everyone can see that. With the damaging information already uncovered, the ethics complaints, the two lawsuits filed against the city, not mentioning the current investigation by the state auditor regarding your My Town series problem, I know stalling probably seems like the best strategy. The problem is this data is our right. It belongs to the people. It isn't a favor you bestow, it's ours. After we uncovered misconduct with that first data batch, we submitted six smaller data requests. We know Deanna received a dozen or more internal emails from our coalition group forwarded to her by your building inspector using city devices, city time and city resources. You guys had two spies working on your side all summer long. How many of you knew that? Offsetting the opposition, it's sickly unethical. Did you forward those emails to anybody here? Tract, other city officials? We want the data ASAP. We also see Tract sent Deanna and Tony a document literally labeled Talking Points for the Farmington PC and Town Council. Why would a developer be writing the script for our city officials? That's not collaboration, that's manipulation of the public process. Who were these talking points passed on to? All of you? I have very good reason to believe they were. I want that data. This is a severe breach of public trust. When a city receives and accepts and distributes messaging from a developer to use on their citizens, it's a fundamental betrayal of the city's role as a neutral decision maker and a public servant. What makes it even worse is that these were sent to Farmington before your residents even got their very first public hearing. So much for serving the people. I wonder, does Tract send talking points to every city they work with? Does Rosemont get theirs, Cannon Falls gets theirs? Do all the cities they work with get their talking points to use against their concerned citizens? Pretty handy. I heard Tract doesn't like being called predatory or slimy on Facebook. Feelings got hurt. So we're also requesting emails from Joshua Hoyt and Brock Haskamp's personal email accounts. They use theirs for official business, now that's public data we want it. While we're on Josh Hoyt, Josh, I'm wondering why you were emailing Angie Craig's office the morning of your big vote, declaring the pending victory. Why was a federal office being looped in? Do any of you know? What is Angie Craig's involvement in this project? I think that needs to be looked into.
Your time's expired, Nancy. You can come up. She gets her five minutes.
You can stand here. There's one data request I'd like in the next 48 hours.
Nancy, your time is expired. Your time is expired.
I bet it is.
I don't have my glasses. Can you read that for me?
There's one data request I'd like in the next 48 hours. I want the exact same data link that was sent to a Star Tribune reporter. The data has already been gathered, reviewed, deemed public, redacted and released by your attorney and released as public information. It's done and out there, I want it, and I'm getting no response from the city. I want all of it, all 5,000 pages, not a selective edit. Being reviewed by your attorney is not an answer, like I was told two weeks ago.
Nancy?
However.
Your time is expired.
I can't read it. I'm asking her to read it for me. I don't have my glasses.
We're not, we're not going to sit here and hijack it to let one person go on for 20, 30, 40 minutes, whatever they want.
We all know it's not being reviewed by your attorney. Like I was told two weeks ago, that's another shameful stall tactic. However, if that's the truth, then I'm assuming someone is pulling data out of there for my sake, which you should be doing. I want the link. Finally, I've asked a simple question to the city and I can't get a reply. This is not an accusation. I just want to know, are city staff and officials able to delete emails? Is that controlled by software or are we relying on an honor system at the city? Can someone empty their deleted folder and make messages permanently vanish? If so, how does that work with the integrity of data collection? And when public records are requested, does the, does the city search deleted folders as part of standard procedure? These are honest questions by a lowly so-called not-in-my-backyard group. I'm not getting any response from the city on how this is managed. We want basic human respect of an answer. Lynn Gorski said the city is taking our ethics complaints seriously. Great, then prove it. Show the people of Farmington what transparency actually looks like. Tell your staff to release the data now. Tell them it's a top priority. Stop stalling, be the ethical leaders you promised to be when you ran for these positions. I would appreciate a written reply to these questions. I'll email you all to make it easy. Number one, how are the deleted emails managed and tracked in the City of Farmington? Number two, when can we expect a response on the two ethics complaints? What is the timeframe? Number three, what can we expect the full remainder of the October 19th data request? Number four, when will we receive an already public data sent to the Star Tribune? We would like that by Wednesday, 48 hours from now. It should only take a minute of someone's time. If not in 48 hours, please provide a reason that will be shared. Number five, when can we expect the six smaller data requests tied directly to our ethics complaints? Number six, is Angie Craig involved or linked to the data center? We want real answers, not we're working on it.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name's Jeff Schotler, I live at 22420 Calico Court. None of us want to be here, none of you want to see us here. I've said the same thing from day one. I've never tried to say, "Stop it, don't build it, do it right." It's a year later. Nobody's put work onto changing what Tract demanded, but changing that Tract said is non-negotiable. Nick, you've acknowledged that this is going to disrupt families and lives. You've acknowledged it, it's been put out in the data requests, okay? Holly, you sat there with Nick at my house, you guys acknowledged together without putting it on paper, saying that this is wrong. You've said, "We're going to call Tract and see what we can do." Steve, you've stood by what you said every time. We've got three people up here that didn't think that proposal was right, but it still got pushed through. What's the point of this? What's the point of having your neighbors sue you? Some of your residents sue you. This is, half of us wouldn't be here. They're all pissed off, I'm pissed off, but we wouldn't all be here if it was something we could live with. We can't even live with it. And you guys know that, it's causing problems all over the country. And you haven't gone back to Tract. They could have probably broke ground already. You guys could be getting what you want. We could still live our lives in our neighborhoods. I've lost two families now. The Peaches and the Folgers, direct result of this. They won't raise their kids around that. You're driving families and people that voted for you. Most of us voted for you guys to be here because we trust you and your leadership. You worked so hard on everything else in this community. You worked to be proud of it. That's all being clouded and shadowed by this one project, because at no point have you really gone to bat for us. You've gone to bat for Tract. Tract stood here and said they'd keep a site up for us to let us know the progression from day one, they guaranteed that. That site's not there. They guaranteed to be in correspondence with residents. They won't respond to none of us. I'm not threatening to sue Tract, there's no reason they shouldn't respond to me. I get if you're not going to respond to me because I'm on a lawsuit. I want off that lawsuit, I don't want nothing to do with it. It costs more than my spring break vacation so far, just out of my pocket, what I've spent on this. I don't want to waste that time or that money. I don't want to have an ill feeling. I want to continue to promote the people that lead my city the way I always have. None of you have ever heard my name unless it was a thumbs up, or if I referred somebody to your companies before, or I said hi to you before, that's the only time you guys knew me. You're coming in next to homes 250 feet away. It's not acceptable. Tract knows it's not acceptable. At least three of you up here have acknowledged that you know in your hearts it's not acceptable. But you're being told by them it's not negotiable. This again, I've said these same things over and over, it's your city, you get to make the rules on how they play the game. They don't need to make your rules, Tract walks away, there's 40 other companies lined up waiting for that parcel. So whether this lawsuit goes your way, do your work, work for your residents. Get Tract to work with you to give some livable space for people. If Tract walks away, set something for the next group that comes in. Be responsible, give some life to your people too. We're all going to live here, we're going to live forever. You're hearing about it now, it's not even built. Once it's built, what do you think the outcome is? Do you not think you're going to have at least one neighborhood full of people in here at every meeting talking about it? This isn't need to be the future of Farmington. It can be part of the future, it doesn't need to be what we talk about for the next five years, that you put a data center on top of homes. Do it, do it right, take a look at what's going on in the other communities, take a look at what Rosemont's doing. Talk to your local mayors, you have all these free resources, all these people that'll talk to you. There isn't a mayor, there isn't another council member, there isn't a house rep, there isn't a senator that has said that 250 feet is adequate. They won't back up some of the bills supported because they don't want to limit business coming to Minnesota, but there isn't a single one, ask them privately, that thinks 250 feet is adequate. It's not. At some point, take your time, take your opportunity, you've had a year. Go back to Tract, tell them you're not comfortable, your people aren't comfortable. Look at the holdup it's done. They should have been closing, ground broken already. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
My name is Mark Pearson, I live at 2475 225th Street West, just on the east side of the golf course. I've addressed you before, but I have a few other things to say that I probably haven't said before. As we've been, we, the residents of Countryside and Executive Estates, have been supporting the city of Farmington for many years. Some of us for 30, 40 years, some of us for a shorter, much shorter time than that. But we have, we work on the food shelf, we've worked on Mountain Dew days, we've worked, we support our local merchants and restaurants, we've participated in park and development activities, Dakota County Sportsman's Club, all kinds of things that I could name, they're just infinite. But we're not feeling the love back from you. The city of Farmington has done nothing to support our position. And I just have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask you directly. This is getting personal, it is personal. Mr. Mayor, if Dirk Riede came to you and said, "Mayor, the only place we can locate this cement factory that we really need is next door to your house," how would you react to that? Mr. Lean, if it was determined that the very best site for a new sewage lagoon was on Aiken Road across from your development, how would you react to that? Is it any wonder that we are fighting for our way of life? It's our ability to sleep at night, to have backyard barbecues in the summer? Who are you people and what are you thinking? How would you ever expect to have a normal relationship with the township of Castle Rock? Fighting the way you are for every straw, every bit of damage that you can do to those of us who live out there. The children of Executive Estates deserve better, and the senior citizens of Countryside Estates deserve better. Do better.
Good evening. Terry Pearson, 2475 225th Street West. Many months ago, I had a letter published in the Sun newspaper. I'm going to read it. My family and I moved to Farmington area 37 years ago. We have supported Farmington businesses, paid school taxes, sent three children through the school district. I also worked for the school district for 27 years. Needless to say, we have deep roots in the community. Sadly, the city of Farmington is considering the rezoning of a property that is within 40 feet of my living room, the Fountain Valley Golf Course. Also up for rezoning is the farmland just south of the golf course, which is within 100 feet of my property. The question before the city involves rezoning these two properties to industrial. This is necessary to build a multi-acre technical campus. If Farmington wants to develop more tech businesses, they should, number one, follow the existing comprehensive plan for residential and commercial development. Number two, consider the rights of homeowners on all three sides of the golf course to a safe and healthy environment. They should not sandwich millions of square feet of buildings up to 80 feet high between all of the existing housing developments. Number two, allow construction that would be incompatible with the surrounding developments. Give away our natural resources for a short-term cash infusion. And so the update I'd like to provide for you, this was many months ago. Follow the existing comprehensive plan? Nope. Consider the rights of the homeowners on all three sides? Nope. Forging ahead with sandwiching millions of square feet of building? Yep. Allow construction that would be incompatible with the surrounding developments? Yep. And give away natural resources for a short-term cash infusion. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with the addition of 7 TAC 15.
I will make a motion to approve.
Motion by Steve, second by Holly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item under petitions, requests, and communications is 10-1. Thank you for picking that up, Tony. Item 10-1 is the Vermillion Commons Fifth Edition Final Plat.
All right. Good evening, mere council members. Before you this evening is the final plat for the Vermillion Commons Fifth Edition, as amended by Lennar, U.S. Homes LLC. The Fifth Edition is located southeast of the Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition and is just to the west of the intersection of Denmark Avenue and 220th Street West. It is that area shown in red on the map on the board there. The plat itself consists of 66 townhome lots spread over 7.25 acres of land. It is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. That preliminary plat also contains 67 single-family lots, which were final-platted as Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition last year. The property is zoned R3 as part of a planned development. The approved PUD allows for private streets in that R3 zone, as well as a reduced width of those private streets down to 24 feet, instead of a typical 26-foot-wide private street. This plat does contain 12 outlots, they're labeled A through L. Outlot A contains the private roads that service the platted area, and then the remaining outlets, outlots, excuse me, are the common areas around the townhome units. These areas will remain under ownership of the HOA. This is the final plat with the 66 townhome lots. Again, with the outlot A being the road system throughout the development itself. Access for the Fifth Edition will come from two points of access, both along 218th Street West, one on the north side, and the second near the southwest corner of the development. As I've mentioned, all streets within the development will be 24 feet in width and will be private. There will be a temporary access, which is shown in the construction plans that have been attached or included in your packet, that extends out from Rose Drive out to 220th Street West. This will provide a secondary emergency access for the Fourth and Fifth Editions, as 218th Street will not be constructed. The original Vermillion Commons area directly east of this development, as you may or may not recall, had the extension of 218th Street over, there's four gas pipelines that bisect that property north and south. One of those pipelines is scheduled to be decommissioned within the next one to two years. And the gas company is requiring, if they were to extend that road over those pipelines, some pretty substantial upgrades, and frankly, they're not cost prohibitive to do right now, specifically if they got to go back and decommission that line, take it out. You'd be ripping up all those improvements within a year or two. So with that, they are providing that secondary access, because originally that 218th Street connection would have been that secondary access in and out of that development. So they are providing that as a temporary emergency access until that 218th Street connection is officially made in hopefully a couple of years. Code does require 132 off-street parking spaces be provided in the Fifth Edition. That would be two parking stalls per dwelling unit. Each townhome unit will have a double-car garage. Additional parking can be provided on each driveway as well. And the developers also proposing 26 off-street visitor parking spaces throughout the addition as well, off of those private streets. As far as parks, trails, and sidewalks, a 1.5-acre parcel was deeded to the city with the Fourth Edition as part of that overall preliminary plat. So with that, there will be no additional parkland dedication or cash-in-lou required with this specific final plat. Five-foot-wide sidewalks will be provided in the Fourth Edition, specifically on the south and east side of 218th Street West. So those will ultimately service this townhome development. Planning Commission did review this final plat at its regular meeting on March 11th, and they did recommend approval with a vote of 5-0. The action that's requested this evening is Adopt Resolution 2025 TAC 021, approving final plat for Vermillion Commons Fifth Edition contingent upon the following. Number one, satisfaction of all engineering comments related to the construction plans for grading and utilities. And number two, a development contract between the developer and city of Farmington shall be executed, and security fees and costs shall be paid. Submission of all other documents required under the development contract shall be required. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Holly? Any questions, comments?
No questions.
Nick?
A question and a comment. The first question with the temporary access, is there a reason that it has to be, I guess, temporary? Maybe that's a stupid question, but is it something that becomes a traffic liability if eventually you do finish 218th and then there's three exits out of the place?
The secondary access doesn't meet county spacing guidelines.
Sure.
So we wouldn't want it to be permanent, just from a traffic flow standpoint. And again, it's only going to be for emergency services.
Right, right, okay, that makes sense. The other comment, I guess, is probably to Leonard more than you, is just, you guys must be doing something right with my parents, who drive by there to come visit their grandkids. We're like, what's with all those townhouses exploding over there so fast? So, the demand is real.
They have said it's been a very good market for them.
Steve?
Nick almost asked my question. I was going to actually ask the developer in phases one through four, like what type of percentage of occupancy do you guys have? And how does that compare to where you guys thought you'd be at at this point? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be one through four, but essentially your completed ones. I mean, are they close to fully occupied?
Steve Trosky, Lennar, great to be here this evening. I've said it before, but we're happy to be in Farmington and will continue to build here. We like the staff, we like the council planning commission. Clearly, residents want to move here as well, so we appreciate that. It is moving faster than we had anticipated. So I don't know the specific percentage of what is occupied or not occupied as we stand here today, but I can say with certainty that it's good. It's faster than we hoped, which is why we're coming back to you so soon.
Awesome.
Jake?
No questions for me, thank you both. I know when, I believe it was the, I don't think the Second Edition had started yet, but the administrator and I had an opportunity to come over and look at the demo, basically. And the representative that was there, the agent, we'd asked the similar question, like how well have these plans been received? And her response paraphrasing was like, "We can't build them fast enough." And I, was that a year and a half ago, if that? And just to watch it happen as quickly, number one, thank you for being a good partner. I mean, that property has sat for decades. And it was an obstacle to many because of the pipeline, right? And all the reasons why projects wouldn't work. And we got creative, put together a mock-up that is financially viable and deeming of a good investment. And it also significantly addresses one of our housing gaps. And this council and prior council made it an effort to ensure that we continue to diversify our housing mix. So to watch us lean in into townhomes that we haven't in almost 15 years now, and then watch it explode in the way that it has is phenomenal. I mean, it's happening exactly as everyone would want it to, and I just, I couldn't be happier with the progress that's been made. And I will absolutely support this going forward, so thank you.
Thank you. I would like to invite you all to the model home when it opens up. In the Fourth Edition, we have some single-family homes, which is a new home in this market for Lennar. This is the first community that's building these smaller, single-family homes. So you could probably see it when you go out there, it's just plywood and whatnot now, but be on the lookout for that, and please stop by when that's complete. It's a new product and we're excited to try it out here in Farmington. Thanks for the kind words.
Thank you, sir. Tony, my apologies. When you read the action request, did you read it all verbatim?
I did.
Okay. Then I would seek a motion to approve as requested. So moved.
Motion by Jake, second by Holly, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordis?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Thank you, Tony. Next item of business is 12-1, which is a resolution,
sorry.
Resolution authorizing, resolution authorizing to request funding from the Environmental and Natural Resources Trust Fund. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff regularly looks for and has noted...
Staff regularly looks for and is notified of funding sources to complete projects in the approved Rambling River Park Master Plan. Recently, a planner in Dakota County's Office of Planning reached out to me, letting me know I should look at the Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources, LCCMR, funding opportunities. This has traditionally been a natural resources-focused program, but over the past few years, there have been substantial park improvement projects funded through the state, including some Dakota County projects. Dakota County was actually awarded two projects in 2025. The Lake Billsby Regional Park Restoration and Recreation, and Thompson County Park Restoration and Accessibility Improvements. Both of these projects were funded over $1 million. The LCCMR announced funding opportunities for projects of all sizes that address several priorities, including education and outdoor recreation, and that aim to protect, conserve, preserve, and enhance Minnesota's air, water, land, fish, wildlife, and other natural resources. The LCCMR reviews applications and makes funding recommendations to the Minnesota Legislature from the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund, the ENRTF. Approximately $104 million is available from the ENRTF for projects beginning July 1 of 2026. Proposals for funding can be submitted by all who want to apply and have demonstrated a financial capacity. There is no minimum or maximum request amount. All applicants requesting funds for pre-design, design, construction, or renovation of a building or trail are required to provide a non-ENRTF match of at least 25% of the total cost to complete the project, and that could be cash or in-kind. During the rambling of our park master planning process, public and stakeholder engagement showed a strong desire for trails and more facilities to support public or popular events in the park. Trail improvements were ranked as the highest priority in the survey HKGI put out. Improved restrooms were ranked as the second highest priority. And as mentioned during the annual report presentation, the existing restrooms were improved this past summer. New restrooms were ranked as the fourth highest priority, and there was a need for additional restrooms to support popular events at the park. During stakeholder engagement for the master plan, a meeting was held with Dakota County Office of Planning. Dakota County was and is still interested in Rambling River Park becoming the trailhead for the North Creek Greenway. The county would contribute up to $400,000 to a new restroom building. They would have an 85-15 cost share for replacement trails. The county would be 85, the city would be 15%. And they would collaborate on securing funding for natural resource water quality improvements along and beyond the Greenway corridor. Thus, the city would be the applicant submitting the proposal to the LCCMR for ENRTF funding with Dakota County as a collaborator. Dakota County retained the services of HKGI to write the funding proposal for the service or for the city. So there's no cost to the city for this service. I want to thank Dakota County and Little Latham for this opportunity. Carrie Kubitschek, the city's regional funding manager, is collaborating with HKGI on the proposal. The proposals are due Wednesday. Selected proposals will be presented before the LCCMR in June 2025. The LCCMR is made up of 17 members, including five senators, five representatives, five citizens appointed by the governor, one citizen appointed by the senate, and one citizen appointed by the house. By May of 2026, the LCCMR recommendations will be presented to the legislature for consideration via introduction as an appropriations bill and be considered and acted upon by the Minnesota House and Senate. Upon passage, the bill would be forwarded to the governor to be signed into law. Most projects are two to three years long, however, more or less time can be requested. The city's funding proposal includes design, Rambling River Park Trail replacement with 10-feet-wide Greenway trails. It shows a zoomed-out version. I'm gonna move it to the closer version. Construction of a new restroom building, addition of trailhead amenities, kiosk bike fix-it station, garbage and recycling containers, benches, et cetera. Shoreline restoration and fishing access improvements. HKGI is estimating the total cost of the project with contingency to be $3,177,800. The 25% match required for the project proposal would be $795,000. Dakota County and the City of Farmington would pay for the match if the project were funded. Dakota County anticipates most of the match would come from them. If the proposal is funded, a determination will need to be made on the allocation of city resources for the project. The plan is to use monies from the parks and trails funds. The action requested tonight is to adopt Resolution 2025 TAC 18, authorizing the submittal of a proposal to request funding from the Environmental and Natural Resources Trust Fund for the North Creek Greenway Trails and Trailhead Construction Project. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nick?
Your TAC thing is taking off, I think. I don't have any question. This is all, excuse me. This is all kind of a great use of our grant writer. I think that's kind of coming into play as we've seen a lot more of these grants come through. So I really appreciate how we're utilizing her and reaching out to her for these kind of high-impact things, so best of luck.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, Kelly, I mean, Nick pretty much covered what I was gonna say. I mean, just really nice job. This is exactly why we wanted to get our grant writer, and it's just really good collaboration with our other government partners, so thank you.
Jake?
I do have one question, and I apologize for not asking this out of time. It only just came to me now. And if you don't know the answer, fine, I could have researched it too. Do you know, you said recently more projects of this nature have been funded?
Correct.
Do you know what the percentage is or what the average funding amount has been? Are we in line, I guess, is what I'm asking?
We might be a little high from what I saw was in 2025, but the county felt good with that number, considering they got two this year for over $2 million total. So we'll see. They could also reduce the amount funded as well.
True. Otherwise, thank you, and thank Carrie as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Holly?
I just like the creativity. You know, we've got things that we want to do. We need to have creative solutions in order to be able to get them done. And as everyone else has already said, you know, it's paying off to have people that know what they're doing, helping to support some of the writing of this. The partnerships are huge, and if this is a funding mechanism that's available, you can't say, I guess, I don't think you can say no to taking a shot at it, so here's to hoping.
I won't cut our chickens before our eggs are hatched, but I noticed that there's that little spot that the trail goes underneath the railway, right? Do we have any idea what kind of timeframe and monies we're talking about to come up with a viable, long-term solution to a crossing?
We don't actually. So we just had a PMT meeting for the Dakota County Greenways last Monday. So Dakota County hired KLJ Engineering. So we're involved in those meetings, Tony, McKenna, Ben Helmly, and Jeremy and I. And obviously, they're looking at that spot, but they're also looking for their north for a crossing over the railroad. Yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen with that underpass, but it's part of their design.
Yeah, okay, good. Cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yep. Right now, they're trying to meet with landowners.
Yeah, no pun intended. Cross that bridge when we get to it. Yeah. No, it's gonna be a complex dynamic in the railroad, we know is, you know, one of the more difficult or complex entities to work with, and there just isn't a whole lot of alternatives outside of completely omitting a trail segment there, so. I appreciate it, thank you, ma'am. With that, I'd seek a motion to approve the action as requested.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Holly, second by Steve, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Benatz?
Yes.
All right, roundtable. Amy, you up?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. To be, a little business, if maybe you know this already, forgive me for being redundant, but a couple of cannabis updates from the legislature, or from the state, actually. There are a couple of kind of housekeeping things that staff will be having to take care of, but just in case it's of interest, the state, the Office of Cannabis Management is currently accepting their business applications, but they haven't issued any licenses yet because the rulemaking process is not complete. But they are saying that they expect to send a draft of the rules to the Office of Administrative Hearings in the coming weeks, whatever that really means, I'm not sure. But, you know, if the timeline holds, by the end of April, they could start issuing licenses. And so then, all the work that the city has done to get ready will have to kind of move into a position, so. And then on the fun side, I did find a fun fact, since it's St. Patrick's Day. Couldn't get any Farmington-specific data, but I did find that 12.1%, in 2022, 12.1% Dakota County, people reporting their Irish ancestry. I don't think they all live in Rosemount, but. And that is 0.1% more than Washington County. But it's also, the US average was 9.5%, so Dakota County is well-represented on St. Patrick's Day. Of course, I think everybody is Irish on a day like today.
Nick?
Last meeting, I think I gave an example of life lessons that I've learned that you shouldn't repeat, so I'll do that again. If you're observing, you'll notice I have a giant bandage on my face. So if you don't want to be a 40-year-old that a dermatologist wags his finger at, please wear sunscreen. That's all.
Holly?
Just in case you missed it, which I don't know that you can, currents are out. And if you're like my family, you open this up, and you start identifying all the things you want to do all summer long, and jotting them down in your calendars. And there is a lot going on in here, ways that you can support, ways that you can impact, ways that you can have a little bit of fun in Farmington. When we talk about putting Farmington first, we don't just mean business. We mean like recreational stuff, too. There's so much going on, and there's so many opportunities to engage. And since it's St. Patty's Day, and you started this, I'm gonna go for it. Ireland is home to the oldest-known bar in the world. Sean's Bar, located in Athlone, has been serving pints since 900 AD. That's over 1,100 years of continuous operation. Archaeologists even found ancient coins and wattle and dob walls. I don't know what those are, apparently they're old, during renovations confirming its history. So the hope in that is that 1,100 years from now, someone will be sitting here and saying something magnificent about a business that's in Farmington, and how crazy it is that it has been in continuous operation for 1,100 years.
It'll likely be the steakhouse. That's just fine.
Not wrong.
Just fine.
And we can hope, right? There it is.
Jake?
Just to piggyback off of Holly's comments, I do want to congratulate a bunch of happy-looking children and our own Kelly Omlid and Steve Wilson for their debut as cover models of the Farmington Currents. But otherwise, I was ambitious this morning and wanted to say Happy St. Patrick's Day in Irish, but I realized that ain't gonna happen, so in English, Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Steve?
I also wanted to comment about the currents. I had my wife calling me and say, I didn't realize you had seven kids. I really don't, we have three together, honey, Josh, Ben, and Elizabeth. But in all seriousness, the police department did a really, really good job of promoting this last year, and as Wes pointed out, the weather wasn't as ideal. I don't remember a 10-mile bike ride, Kelly, I remember, you know, so it ended up being about two blocks, and because it was raining. But I really, what I would honestly encourage everybody that is watching, and we already know that the arbitrary rating for the Farmington City Council meetings is really, really high. So when you get this, I would actually encourage you to look through it. Put in an event or two that you want to partake in for yourself, with your family, with your kids, maybe with your parents at the senior center. There is just so many good things in here. And I also like the fact that, Lynn, who do we have coordinating putting this together? It's our Communications Department, yeah. I mean, so Corinne did something really nice here, too, which I believe she always does, but highlight our new employees, so getting to meet the new employees. This is a really, really, I mean, they're all good, but this is a really, really good packed edition of the current. So thank you to Corinne and everybody who helped put that together.
Lynn? Shirley?
I don't have anything tonight either.
David?
Tonight, you approve the appointment of Tori Wolf to the Senior Administrative Sports Technician in the Public Works Department. While we are very excited to see Corinne take on some new challenges in Public Works, it does open up a key vacancy at the front desk. That position really is truly a central service that is both physically located smack dab in the middle of the city hall, as well as one of the first faces visitors to City Hall C, but also operationally, as it supports administration, human resources, finance, parks and recreation, liquor operations, and serves as a backup to community economic development. So Kim, Kelly and I did take some time to review the job description to ensure it still, you know, best serves the needs of the city, especially with Tori's new position in Public Works. That is gonna be, should be posted tomorrow, and should all go well. We're excited to have, hopefully, a new team member join us mid to late May. Other than that, I continue my dive down the rabbit hole. And needless to say, there is no twilling of the thumbs occurring in my office. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to comment about our EDA meeting today. We had the leadership from DCTC and Inver Hills come in and talk with the EDA about the partnership and the collaboration that currently exists between the city and the colleges. But then also, we had an opportunity to have a robust discussion about ways that we can enhance their offerings and the relationship that we have to better, continue to better the community. So I'm really thankful for the participation that you all had with that conversation, and I'm also very excited to see where that partnership and collaboration can go. We will also be bringing in additional partners to the EDA meetings just so that we can continue to have these kind of conversations. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Kelly?
With the delivering of the summer currents, as mentioned earlier, program registration is now up and going. As of this morning, we already had seven signed up for the Helmut Heroes Day. That is a free event, but we do ask for registration, just so we know how many and who's gonna be there. And then the Open Door Food Pantry pop-up is tomorrow, 3:00 to 4:30 at Faith United Methodist Church on 7th Street.
Thank you. Kim?
Nothing this evening.
Y'all deviating from the plan here.
Chief?
Now I feel bad, I was gonna say nothing.
You can, that's.
Welcome, David.
That was pretty good.
I don't have anything to add, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:46 PM.
Motion by Jake, second by Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 8:47.